All right, we're good to go.
You guys can hear me all right, correct?
All good.
So, all right, so. So being Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P M. And have in Quorum, go to item one and call the meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board to order. The meeting is that this meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. Pursuant to the governor's approval as supplemental budget bill, temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location. And to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of the extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law. Other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three. To March thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five, members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely. And shall address the questions through the chair of the board or the host who's Mr. O'Brien this evening. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely this evening. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair, Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, Ms. Astrod Rojas. Is Miss Miss Begone or Mr. Haley with us?
Neither are here.
And Miss Rojas is with us right now? So, so the Mr. Haley or Miss Begone have not joined us yet. During the meeting, all the votes will be taken as roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff are with us this evening remotely, Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town planner. Mr. Greg Tansey, the town engineer, and Mr. Solari is with us or not with us?
Uh, not at this time.
So just those two members of the. The town, at this time, everyone's mics are muted, the board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives mics will be unmuted. If there's a public hearing, which you have two this evening, and I'll ask a public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listening to your name, your address, and your question. The chair of the host will recognize questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the chair or the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can do use star nine to raise your hand. Okay, so item two, we have an open session meeting with town attorney Jason Rollins to discuss John P. Weldon as trustee of the Weldon Properties Realty Trust. First, Patrick Driscoll and all, this is regards to fifty-four Grinch Park. So if Attorney Rollins is with us.
I'm here. Good evening, everyone. This should be very brief. I just wanted to come back before you all, I know we discussed this extensively in executive session over the last couple of years. We were able to resolve the matter and the means in which you all had requested. With the specific language that I believe Mr. Driscoll had also requested. So I think we're in great shape. That case is now dismissed. The conservation restrictions on the two properties in question have been formalized, have been recorded with the registry of deeds. And so now are far more specific and robust as it relates to those areas of those parcels. So I think it's a good result, and I just wanted to make sure I came back before you. In open session and just let you know that that case is now resolved.
Right, thanks.
Any questions from anyone?
No.
No, I think my only question, Jason, that means that I can produce executive session minutes for the board to approve.
Correct, exactly. Yep. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I apologize, Charlie Rollins. I actually have one question if you're still here.
He's gone.
That's okay.
Thank you very much. Are we all set with that, Mr. O'Brien? Mr. Rollins, all good?
Yeah, you, you, that was just kind of it. Jason wanted to be on the agenda to discuss an open session. I just want a confirmation that I can start deciphering the executive session minutes for this board to approve at some point.
Okay, great. All right, so I'll move on to item three, public hearings continued. Let's see. Pulling everything out for this. Shane, what did I do? Let's see, twenty?
Up next is eight fifteen Bedford Street.
Oh, I know, I'm just trying to pull up the packet and the, I mean. I just had it earlier, so it's in site, it's in some of the site plan reviews, right? That's the full. Eight fifteen, all right, I got. Okay, all right, so item three, this is public hearings continued. The first public hearing we have this evening is eight fifteen Bedford Street. This is map eighty-eight, lot twenty-three. This is a site plan review, section ten point six. For a new commercial retail building as well as self-storage facilities and other site improvements. This is continued from our August twenty-first meeting. So at this point, I will turn it over to the representatives of the project. We can then have the board ask questions along with town staff. And then open it up for public comment. So the applicant would like to. Begin, go ahead.
All right, Larry Silva from Silver Engineering Associates, offices at sixteen fifteen Bedford Street in Bridgewater. At the last meeting, we pretty much had resolved most issues. The big one that was still left was the issue of test pits. And at that time, we agreed that we would arrange with the town engineer. A date and time to go out there to do test pits together. So we could come to a consensus on our design of the basin. Last Thursday. Greg Tansey and myself were out there at the site. We completed five very deep test pits, scary kind of deep. They, and we were able to see the soil structure in each one of those locations. Understand the soils and the dynamics of what was going on. And reach the consensus as to how to approach our final design of the of the basin. So subsequent to that. We made changes or enhancements to the to the basin design. And we also addressed comments that that he had in his last. Letter to the board, his comment letter. And so we provided both the response letter and that included. How we're addressing the basin changes, and we provided those to Greg. And and I want to tell you, I, I want to commend the fact that. That Greg was responsive in coming out there with on short notice to do the test bits with me. And then when we provided him a response. He turned around answers and a letter back to your board. Within twenty-four hours, less than twenty-four hours, I would say, almost same day kind of service. So, because we had addressed a lot of the issues already, and he knew what was going to be coming forward in that letter. But having turned that around made it possible for us to feel very comfortable about where we are tonight. So what the changes in the in the basin? Basically, that we identified two locations that we're going to put in basically wicks. That are going to allow for us to assist in having the water infiltrate down into the basin. One of them is in an area where the issue had come up about us. The soil and groundwater and so forth, and that one's designed in order to deal with an isolated area. That allows for water in some areas to go laterally instead of just vertically down. And by virtual putting in this wick in that area, we forego the. The possibility that we would have that lateral kind of movement of water. It will continue downward in the in the path that it should through the sands. And then there's a second wick, which is in the basin closest to Bedford Street. And I don't know, is there any way to be able to see? See that detail? I don't know, Rebecca, can you bring that one up or not?
The detail or the location or both?
Both probably. And one of the, one of the things that we did do in terms of the design of the wick was also taking into account. Seasonal issues that occur sometimes in basins. By putting in dome structures in the basin itself at the two wick points. That allow for there to be a domed entrance into into that work. So as you can see, along the whole alignment of the basement. Is a is a four foot wide, two foot deep stone lined path. Which gives, you know, sort of a preferential way for water to travel through the basin. The first wick you can see, well, it's actually basin. Basin Wig B, the one towards the rear there. That one there is the one that is designed to a bottom elevation of of sixty-nine. And that takes us down past that layer that was causing. Water to go laterally instead of vertically. And so.
I believe we've lost Mr. Silva for the time being.
Yeah.
Oh, Larry, you're muted or cut out.
Cut out.
So I was trying to get Larry back, Rebecca, the, the, and the basin wick, right?
Yes.
So that the bottom of that basin is roughly, what, seventy, seventy, elevation seventy?
The proposed elevation of this basin is seventy-three. And the wick will go down to sixty-nine.
Right, so, so that's, so that's four feet of stone and sand.
Sand, yep, in the area of this four foot diameter structure with so, sand around it and. And hydraulic connection.
Yeah, and we, I apologize, we're just looking at another one. So, so the the elevation of the of the front line closest to eighteen is seventy, right? And the bottom, and the bottom, the bottom of that sixty-six?
Yes.
What's the, and this plan doesn't show, but the elevation of the road's like mid-sixties, isn't it, if I remember?
If I switch pages, I can give you that answer. Sixty-seven, roughly where we are.
How about, how about on the Romney roadside, like sixty? The bottom of that basin to begin with is five feet higher than that road anyway.
Correct.
And then, and then, and I just can't remember from the original design was, were those stone trenches were added as part of this, is that correct? Oh, the stone trench is always there.
Nope, they were added.
So those two foot wide stone trenches are being added everywhere, and they're going to connect to those.
They're going to encourage water into those wicks.
The wicks, okay.
Did Larry come back?
I don't, can you hear me now?
Your internet.
Right, and the grading for those basins starts outside of that twenty foot. Twenty foot basin, twenty foot no touch, so to speak, that twenty foot perimeter.
The twenty foot buffer is illustrated with the gas stream, and then the the berm comes up and then goes back down after all of that.
And so that basin is about fifteen feet off of that, twenty foot or twenty feet off that anyway, right? It just starts, it goes up and then grades down, all right?
Yep.
And Mr. Tansey, you feel that this is based on what you saw out there, this is the best solution? Can you guys hear me or not?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just had to unmute myself. Yeah. When we were out there, we were looking at the test pits. We, we pretty much concluded that the the best method. To control groundwater was with this wick system. Now, I, I'm not sure if this plan is is a hundred percent complete. Mr. Silver said that he's gonna. Bring a, a plan, you know, an updated set of plans. forthcoming. The only thing that I would check is just to, we, we hit some lenses. And throughout these test pits that we see.
What's a lens?
A lens is where. You'll hit. A thin layer of material that's not as permeable as the sand. And what happens is water gets perched on it. And it runs laterally rather than vertically. And this is what Mr. Silva was talking about earlier. Now, the intent of the wick is to punch through that. Less permeable layer, and these layers were probably. I don't know, five or six inches thick. And and water does drain through them, but they drains through a lot slower. And they, they create like a mini perched water table. And then they would, you know. Disperse, and some of the dispersal was most likely to Romney Road from what I could observe. What these wicks are intended to do. Is to punch through those layers. So that water doesn't perch on top of those lenses, you know, it's like. You know, think when, you know, an eyeglass lens or or a plate, it's a. You know, it's a, it's a thin. It can be irregular shape. That. You know, it, it just has sand above it and sand below it, and the sand on top. Runoff runs right through it, but once it hits that lens, it disperses and it goes in many different directions and not necessarily down. So I just want to make sure that. The wick intercepts and punctures through the critical lens layers. And I think. If that be the case, we should have a basin here that will. Dispose of the the stormwater as intended. But I just, I didn't get a chance to to physically look at the the plan that we see here. I saw parts of it, but I didn't see the the plan in its entirety. But I think we're on the right path, maybe an elevation might get tweaked here and there, maybe not. I just have to take a quick look at it.
Okay, so I'm, so I guess I'm a little confused. The, the plans are, the, the last set of plans that we have online of the July thirtieth plans, have we received updated plans since then?
I believe this is the updated plan that we see right here, but I, I didn't get a chance to review this particular plan.
Has that been, this plan has not been submitted yet?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I, I didn't get a chance to review this plan in its entirety. I believe I've seen portions of it in the comment letter or response letter, I should say. But the the plan in its entirety, I, I have not seen yet.
I believe the hope and the intent was that we could resolve those minor housekeeping items in a condition of approval prior to endorsement. So we would address all the last of the plan changes, have Mr. Tansey or whomever review and make sure that it was all kosher. Before we had the planning board.
Mr. Tansey, if I may. These groundwater issues you've described. Well, they might be resolved in the present term. If, if you were to project out to twenty years or so. Do you believe this project would still be? Viable, or do you believe there would possibly be issues from the groundwater at that point?
Oh, after, after twenty years of in service, is that what you're asking for, how well it holds up?
Yes, sir, I'm asking for the future.
As long as it's maintained. It will function as intended indefinitely. And that's why we have a maintenance schedule. On, on all of our BMP controls. So that they will last indefinitely. You know, as long as they're maintained, there really shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, and I pardon my ignorance here, I'm not familiar with this wick system that you're talking about. Would you mind explaining that to me?
Uh, sure, wicks are commonly used in the industry. I've used them before, and and they. They, they are an effective way of controlling groundwater. Groundwater migration, to be more exact. And what they do is they intercept. Layers that are less permeable. And it allows the groundwater to be transmitted. Vertically downward rather than dispersing laterally where it can. You know, find its way breaking out of. Slopes, side slopes of hills, or if that side slope was. Cut and ingrated back and and a wall was put there. Like as in the case here, this will promote a vertical movement of groundwater rather than having it flow. Towards, in this case, Romney Road. And that's, that's the intent of this wick is to control that. Control the infiltration of groundwater from the basins and have it go vertically rather than laterally.
Thank you, sir, and where does that, where does that groundwater go?
The groundwater.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Larry, okay.
All right, so when we said, when you say groundwater, we're talking about the stormwater that goes into the basin. And then it vertically is going down through the pond. I'm hearing a double echo here, this is hot.
You're talking through your Zoom, Larry, not the phone.
You're talking through your phone, shut your volume off, there you go.
Now you're talking through, he's talking through the Zoom, not his phone.
Oh, Kent.
I'm trying.
Someday we'll go back in person.
So, so Greg, the other thing, just while we wait for Larry to get back on, just looking at this. I mean, adding these two, these two foot wide trenches with these wicks also provides a tremendous amount of storage if we get a big storm, correct?
Yes, it will.
So that, I mean, that kind of acts as, as what we refer to as detail ten and our subdivision rules and regs. It, it's like the underground storage, so that we don't have stand, the idea is to not have standing water in these basins. Right, there's a connection, a connection point to the better material.
Yes, it is, it's on the same principle as the, the infiltration system below a detention basin. Like what we use in in the subdivision control regs. The week, the wick on this project will just go a little bit deeper. To en- ensure that it, it intercepts. The lens layers, I think, and a couple of pits, we might have hit. Two or more lens layers. So I just want to make sure.
Is four or five feet of removal replaced best based on the test pits sufficient to address the issue?
Um, well, that's, that's one thing I just want to. You know, take a look at and check and make sure that that was really my, my only concern. And if, if the wick has to go deeper, it's not a major plan change, it's just a change in the the elevation on the detail.
Do you believe you need more time to?
Could you?
Yes, we can hear you, Larry, Michael, you want to repeat your question, sorry.
If you actually unmuted my, my cell phone, I could mute mute this one.
All right, what's your cell phone?
Five oh eight three two six nine six seven three.
All right, I'll, I'll unmute you, but we have a question from a board member, Larry, so I'll just have to. You on there and then unmute your phone.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Mr. Tansey, do you believe you have sufficient time to establish whether or not that is the case? Or do you feel like you need more time to do so?
I'm not sure. What? What you're asking, I don't.
You were asking, or stating rather. That you were conducting tests. To. I'm sorry.
I think it's a comfort level, Greg, to approve the plans with conditions based on what. Further review would be, or if this needs to be pushed to a later meeting for you to review that.
Exactly, Mr. Ryan, I.
It just, and just to kind of, not to pile on that, just, I know in the past, we've had some situations where. Through the construction process, we've continued to review drainage basins as well as other. Infrastructure issues that may change. So I, I would leave it up to the comfort of the board, but we do have situations through. The construction process where we, we may say, you know what, let's try this, or let's do this instead, because something's discovered through the, the con. The, the construction process, so. You know, when we endorse plans and approve plans too, you know, there is. Potential for, you know, especially things of infrastructure issues for us to be like, okay, well. If you can do this instead, that would satisfy it. So, but yeah, I'd let Greg address that as well, Michael.
If I could, if you can hear me now. To answer the question that Greg had was that the wick elevations, if you look on that detail. There's a bottom elevation on each one of those two wicks. And those, those, those were identified as. Being below the layer that we saw in the field. Greg, in order to, so for the one there, the one that was the real issue was the one at Wick B. And so what we did is we established the bottom of that wick. So that it was below that layer, that that tighter layer that we saw. In that test pit that we did not see in the adjoining test pits. So we actually took that one down vertically below that in order to make sure we penetrated that area. And took that so that we would not have lateral movement, we would have just vertical movement. As far as the wick in the front, as you recall, where that location is, is close to. Where we encountered the septic system from the house. And that, that was in a zone that was in really good sand to begin with. And so aside from removing any remnants of a, of a septic system in that area. The bottom of that work is clearly in the best sands, the medium car sands, the best sands that we found anywhere on the site.
So Larry, can you, can you walk through now? I mean, in, in like the hundred year storm, if we had an issue. Hopefully, there is no overflow, but if there was overflow, where that would, where that emergency overflow would would take place?
Well, if, if what you're saying is that if we reached the point where the basin was totally full up to elevation. Seventy-three, five. At that point, there's a standpipe outlet. Which is at the eastern end of the, of the, of the pond.
Yeah.
Or the basin. And that, and that would then take water in and bring it over to Drainage Manhole sixteen. And then it would take it down to. A, a series, basically, as you can see, there's a stoned area, twelve inch perforated pipe. And an invert somewhere around elevation seventy, I think it says. And with eighteen inches round of stone around it. So in the catastrophic event, you know, the greater than Noah's ark kind of event, it's more than what the design. Criteria are for designing basins. Uh, you know, the greater than Noah's ark kind of event, it's more than what the design uh criteria are for designing basins. Um, any kind of discharge that would ever leave this area would go in that direction right there and find its way. Uh, towards the intersection of um of um of Bedford and Romney. But uh, all our design calculations show that uh for all all storm events uh up to the uh. And I correct me, Rebecca, to up to the hundred that we are actually able to handle the volume in the pond itself. Without utilizing anything like an outlet pipe.
I'm sorry, Mr. So I say you've decided to handle the hundred or?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at the size of this basin, the sheer volume of the of that basin is is enormous. Okay, and uh so the water comes in and the water goes in the vertical direction down. And and you say, well, it's going vertically down. Well, you know, where before some of it used to go horizontally or across. Well, you know what? Um, in this case here, what you're doing is you're making it a better situation because you're getting a direct connection to the sands underneath. And you're not shedding water off towards Romney Road. In fact, there was a condition, uh, one of the earlier comments that uh that Greg had made uh based on observations when he had been out in the field. Uh, so he saw some wet areas along the slope behind the wall along Romney Road. Uh, the the that that condition was the result of uh that thin layer where when water's going vertically down through the sands. It then gets diverted to go uh horizontally. In this case, now with the WIC in place, it that doesn't happen. The water just continues going down vertically. And the um the geotech report, which we provided to the board as well, uh, which was done by McFail Associates. All our test pits confirm what they said in their test borings. And that is that groundwater on this site is somewhere around elevation sixty four, which is below the elevation of Romney Road.
Uh, Mr. Silva, would you be amenable to a condition uh regarding the maintenance of the WICs?
I don't think that's a problem. I mean, it depends on how you're wording it, but I think that maintenance of the WIC is something that um. Uh, it should be, there there should be maintenance of the WIC if needed and. So a condition that uh just uh suggests that that has to be done or evaluated on a. Uh, periodically, I don't think that's a problem at all.
Wouldn't wouldn't that be part of the whole?
Way of operating, that's all.
Wouldn't wouldn't that be part of the whole maintenance agreement to keep the whole basin maintained?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say it's gonna be done anyway. Because you have to maintain a basin to to keep it operating properly.
Correct. So so the next question I have right now is um are the two WICs the same size right now? We even know the basins are two different sizes?
Yeah.
After and after we and and Mr. Tansy, I guess after review, will you decide whether those are sufficient sizes for each or not? And and is one WIC in each basin enough?
I believe that it will be. Um, and and there'll be calculations that will help to uh support that. But generally speaking, my um my experiences with WICs are. As long as they're deep enough and as long as they're wide enough, uh, you'll get the penetration and the infiltration that you need. Um, and these WICs are are pretty, pretty wide. Um, I think um. I you you specified it as four feet, as if I recall correctly, is that?
Yeah.
For correct four foot in in width and around the um. Around the dry well, they're even wider.
Yep.
You know, but there's two feet on either side of the um of the dry well. Um, as long as there's there's clean, porous sand that um. That that goes the whole length of the uh, you know, from the top to the bottom of the WIC. Um, you know, you you'll get a good uh transmission of um. Uh, of the the stormwater that's retained in in the in the basin. You'll get good infiltration. Um.
Okay.
And and for the for the top soil here, you you've got. Twenty-four inches of.
Yeah, the stone, the stone on top. Yeah.
Okay.
So a four foot wide, two foot deep of uh riverbed round stone will.
Okay.
Hydraulically connect the outfall to the WIC.
Right. So that 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 stone will be exposed to the surface and it'll sit on top of the the sand layer. Is is that correct?
Um, it'll be low and seed on the sides and this will be at the surface.
Yeah, then in the on top of the WIC, the stone will be right at the surface. Okay.
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Tansy, your professional opinion, how often would one of these WICs need to be maintained?
Well, it it'll get periodic maintenance every time the base basin gets maintenance. Um, typically, uh, any type of debris that gets retained on there, usually, you you know, you can get um. Lawn clippings that get retained on top of the stone. You get, you can get um leaf litter, twigs. Uh, e- even um manmade refuse getting blown in there that needs to be cleaned out. Um, what I what I like to do is if you've got, let's say, like a twenty-four inch. Uh, crushed stone on top of uh a WIC. What I would do is I'd I'd wrap that stone in filter fabric and then um. You know, maybe instead of having a twenty-four inches um deep. Having eighteen inches deep with maybe um six inches of a of a smaller stone. You know, maybe a a half or a quarter inch stone. That um if it does get clogged, all you're doing is you're re- removing, you know, six inches of stone. And replacing it with six inches of stone. Um, I mean, that's just, you know, my my personal preference. But I'm not here to design it. I mean, what what they've proposed um will will work. Um, the only thing is if that stone does get clogged, they're probably gonna. You know, have to remove. You know, maybe. Six to twelve inches of the top of it, uh, maybe all of it, depending upon how, you know, um, silted up it it gets. But I don't, it it shouldn't get silted up. Because they've got enough stormwater controls, they've got some proprietary units. Um, that's that do a very effective way of filtering discharges into the basin. But um, I mean, I I think I think we're on the right path here. Um, i- if in the field, if if a. If a tweak or an edit needs to be done, or we feel that it would serve us better, it could always be done in the field too.
Thank you.
So just to add to this, because I know I did provide some language for a possible decision. Would the board feel comfortable if um we included an operations and maintenance plan uh that uh Silva would produce? But would take in uh Greg's comments into consideration?
Well, that's a, that's kind of what I'm working towards, uh, Mr. Brian.
Alrighty.
Mister.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please.
I was not speaking. I didn't mean to go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Uh, Mr. Tansy, uh. Do you feel a six month uh check on this would be sufficient to? I I really had a male in here a little bit.
No, actually, that that's um. Uh, that's that's um sufficient. And and in fact, um, every six months. Um, Mr. Silva has put in um and as a a a maintenance interval. Uh, for these every six months, the the basins are gonna be inspected and cleaned. Um, I think he's got a mowing schedule in there that's probably a little bit more frequent than that, if I recall correctly. But generally speaking, if every six months these um. Basins get maintained, that has been an acceptable standard.
I have on the screen the O and M.
Excellent.
If you can see the screen.
Yes.
Okay, so uh catch basin, we got quarterly, you look at it, you make sure. There's nothing there. I think it's pumped every um when sediment deposits are greater than twenty-four inches. Uh, there's a a maintenance for the stormwater separators. For the infiltration basins, you inspect them twice a year, you clean and remove. Uh, debris debris manually at least twice a year, fall fall and spring. And mowing, and so you get every six months, fall and spring cleanup, when you should be looking inside of that catch basin. Uh, beehive to to get rid of your trash, the butts, your cups, your your leaves, your twigs. So it is written in the O and M.
I have no further concerns then.
Thank you.
Uh, so can we do so? I'm just a little confused because I may have been. So Shane, what's happening now is, and I I may be uh. If Rebecca Rebecca, could you pull up the most current site plan? I have I have it in the system. I what I've been looking at is stuff from seven thirty one twenty four. Stuff been updated since then?
Nothing, no plans have been updated. No physical plans have been provided to the board or to Greg Tansy. They were snippets. In a response letter. I made them in the drawings, which shows you on the screen.
Can you pull up? Can then can you pull up the most current site plan with all these changes on it? Do you have that available yet?
This is one of the sheets of the most current with some of the changes, yes.
All right, so let me.
And you can see the the date is blank. I haven't.
All right, so if I so 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 go back to that plan for a second, right? So full screen. So. The the main building on lot B, so that that storage building there.
Yes.
This plan looks different than one of the last plans than 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 the last plan. It appeared that the. That the mini storage um building, those roof drains were connected to the drainage system. That appears to be off this plan. Is that correct?
Roof drains will come to the surface and then uh sheet flow to the catch basin. So instead of chambers underground, they will surface sheet flow to the catch basins.
Right, and the last the last that the alternative design that you guys provided, right?
The alternative design, we showed a presentation plan. Is that the one you're thinking of?
Yeah, and see how all right. So if you could you blow that up?
I can.
That's kind of what I'm marking off. The that shows that these roof drains were connected to the system directly instead of having sheet flow, correct?
At one point, I was considering that as an option. Yep, but um once I finally started doing the pipe runs, it was easier to size the pipes. If they just sheet flow instead of going into manholes. The placement of the manhole is different.
Well, so just Greg, is that I, you know, in a snow event and things like that, is that is? Does the drainage system still work as well, knowing now that those don't connect directly? Because I I just picked that up on the two different sheets. Does that matter to you now?
Um, that really doesn't matter to me. This is a, you know, a storage facility. Um, it's not a high traffic um area as long as the um.
My concern is is the water gonna end up in the right place the way it's designed without those connection points?
Yeah, the what they've what they've done is they've set the um catch basin rims at low points. Um, you can see the blue grading around that center catch basin. Um, and what that means is, you know, any um runoff coming off, let's say, like, for example, the east side of that building. It'll hit the pavement and it will run back uh easily towards the curb. It will flow towards the uh the catch basin. It'll run run down against the curb or the gutter. That's out there and and the catch basin will pick it up. And that will happen um. In the southeastern corner and in the northeastern corner as well. And then, you know, on the southern side, you've got the same type of gr- grading pattern. That's got the the various inlet grades uh located at low points. It looks like they've got the they're working with the the gutter. Um, pavement along the uh along the curving to assist in in the hydraulic efficiencies of these grades. So um, I really didn't, you know, have have a concern of uh, you know, the discharge. Going on to the pavement and into the um into the catch basin.
Okay, it all and then the building out front, that never had any connection points um proposed. It that that was always meant to sheet runoff to the catch basins as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. And then and then just, just so I'm clear, this up upfront by the um. By the truck entrance, infiltration bed two, that's that's basically floater fuses or or something like that. And that's basically just to handle those two catch basins at the intersection. And that that oil water separator is is the one that you're talking about that'll need to be sucked out and maintained, correct? One of one of them.
Catch basins need to be sucked out and cleaned, but oil grit separators as well. Yes, this is to capture the runoff before it enters Bedford Street because DOT permits. Don't allow runoff.
Into the street.
Right, so it's just a catch a little bit.
And can you go to the other side now as well?
Okay.
The other side is the same setup, right?
Correct. The catch basins, manhole, oil grit separator.
Are there other oil and grit separators in the this other there's storm scepters before it enters the the field, is that correct?
Yeah, um, did these have storm scepter for a moment? Um. And they have just done it with oil grit, the catch basin with the oil water separator.
All right, I'm saying, I'm saying, what's the what's the treatment before it goes into the other? The new the newly designed basins on the other side?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so those go from catch basins to um vortex cleaning and then they discharge.
Good.
And the other one does too. So the other ones all collect and convey into a storm scepter style vortex cleaning unit and like destroyed.
And on this new new plan, it doesn't appear this, the only grading changes are really the the bottoms of the basin that that Greg and Larry spoke about once five feet. Lower than was initially proposed, is that correct? I saw this around one of the reviews. It was at seventy-six and I was at seventy-one.
How are you? I'm good. How are you? Who's the name? Ah, yes. Sorry, I'm getting a delivery now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
But but great, I mean, that's the only grading change, grading, and there's still no grading all the way around in that twenty foot buffer in the grading remain, just the.
Nothing in the twenty foot buffer at all.
No, this is very similar to the seven thirty grading. Um, most of it's a lot of detailing, um, numbers, elevations added. More details for construction purposes.
Okay. All right, now, any other board of staff questions or comments? And just to be clear, just on our last. The twenty foot buffer that's remaining. So just to be clear, the intent there is there's gonna be no grading change. There's no grading proposed in that twenty foot buffer. Um, the existing um vegetation is to remain, even though the um landscape plan that we saw at the last meeting shows a line of trees out back. That's the the existing vegetation is intended to remain, but should there be a hazard or something like that? One of the native species pine trees, et cetera, that have by have been identified will be used as infill. Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
All right. Any other board questions or staff comments?
No questions. I would make a motion to approve.
Wait a minute.
Too early.
The public hearing. It's a public hearing. So um do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak and discuss this project at this point?
Alright, please raise your virtual hand or uh send me a message in the chat stating that you would like to speak. Let me just make sure, go across the board. Alright, I don't see any virtual hands raised, nor do I see anyone in the chat. Um, so I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so before we have um anymore, i- is there any more discussion on this? Is there anybody from the, from the board or the staff that'd like to make comments or questions on this? So I'll just, Mr. Tansey, um, a lot of changes, I think good changes have been proposed to ensure that the drainage works properly.
Yes.
We don't have updated plans. I'm, I'm looking at um alter, alternative plans from seven thirty one. Um, we can do a couple of things. We can close the public hearing and approve it or deny it. We can, we can keep the public hearing open. We can close the public hearing, but wait on a decision until you get the final plans to review. Um, they also have to record a Form A at some point to Shane, right? Is that, is that gonna be a condition of the plan?
Yeah, I think that's uh an appropriate, as well as I did place as part of the uh conditions, the, the consideration conditions I sent over to the board. Um, when, if and when there's a change in ownership that um, the applicant can provide some information about cross easements, but it, as it currently stands, the applicant will, can do an A and R and have it under common ownership for both properties, so there'd be no need for uh cross easements.
Okay, so um the A and R will obviously have to be be endorsed by, to any construction, correct?
Correct, whatever means you, you guys wanna condition it uh in the order of operations, um, yeah, prior to
The A and R could be endorsed when the final site plan bring, is put before you for that endorsement, same time.
Good. Alright, so Mr. Tansey, based on what you see now, I mean, you mentioned you need to see a final review. Are you okay with us moving forward? Are you okay? Wha- what is your preference in terms of engineering reviews?
Um, I, I'm comfortable if the board decides to move forward. Um, I'm comfortable with that. I don't anticipate that there'll be any um significant changes. Um you know, the, the WIC was really the, the primary concern. And uh, and, and they, they designed the basin with the WIC and I just wanna uh, I just put eyes on it and make sure that you know, it, it's, it's a hundred percent. If it needs a tweak, it, it, you know, it's easy enough to do, but um I don't have any major concerns at this point.
So we could, we could make the approval subject to, to final um drainage review by you, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think on my end, Pat, um, some of the information that we would provide as part of presentation to especially the uh op, the O and M schedule, I think is important to be placed as part of the record or conditioned on as well too, cause there's additional supplemental material that um, we wanna make sure is approved as part of this project. Um, cause I think that O and M schedule that was presented is, is very important, like based on the conversations that we had too.
Okay, and I thought that I saw that um fill removal has been reduced by about twenty percent, which is a good thing. Um, this still is a substantial amount of material coming off the site. You're comfortable Shane with the um dust management plan and all that being incorporated to the decision?
Yeah, it really comes down to, I, I have no issues in terms of uh Silva Engineering's production of an erosion control and a sedimentation control. It really comes down to the contractors and how we have to handle dealing with them. Um, so uh typically during a pre-construction meeting, we would um have Silva Engineering there as well as whoever, whomever the contractor is gonna be. Um, so, yeah, I have no issues with uh the way it's described on the plans. It's just a matter of the functionality of real life and when we have to go to a site and make sure everything's okay.
You know, it seems our biggest complaint when a project happens isn't noise, there isn't trucks, it's dust, right? So um, is, and, and I guess enforcement of that is, is key. So who, who enforces that? Is that Larry, is that you? Who, who enforces the?
I would say, I would say in a recent situation for a subdivision, um, it would be myself, it would be us as a planning board. Um, so I, I typically handle in terms of uh sedimentation control and erosion control issues. Um, unless there's some sort of nuisance violation, that's when Board of Health would be involved or you know, I, I know, I think a lot of people consider Steve a jack of all trades and where they just end up calling him anyways, but not everything is a zoning violation, just to let uh everyone know or a building violation. Um, but yeah, that'd be typically uh myself um discussing. You know, if we're having a drought or something, or it's been a dry season, um making sure water cannons are used. So it's just, everything, like I said, is typically on the plans. Silva does a good job in terms of putting it on the plans. It's just a matter of reminding contractors to, you know, wet the soil, make sure everything's cleaned up. And we can add additional language as part of um whether it be through pre-construction in terms of just a, a, a more powerful maintenance plan, making sure that you know, uh, construction material is cleaned off of Bedford Street, it's cleaned by end of day. Um but yeah, typically I don't have to, you know, I, we chase people down for tip- typical construction work, but I, I don't see any issues in terms of this, um, but
And I would imagine we would condition it that all material would leave Route eighteen and not the rear access that they're proposing, correct?
Yeah, that's completely fine.
Okay, um, what about hours of operation for these two businesses? Is that something that we?
Uh, well, I think, I think it was discussed that the, the back building was twenty four seven. Um, and then Ace Hardware would be, I don't think there was mentioned, but um typically, we wouldn't do, typically, we wouldn't ask for hours of operations for a site plan review. Um, I guess it's more from an informative sense. It would be typically something we would condition as a a special permit, but I, I don't, I don't see it being an issue.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, if the back building is twenty four seven, then I can't imagine the front building being much different, that's gonna be a problem. You, I'm sorry, you were saying the front building you thought would be what? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm saying if the back building is twenty four seven, I can't imagine the front building also being the same would be much of a problem. Yeah, but I, I think the front building we're talking about, a, a much uh shorter timeframe in which it's
If I may, I believe the hours were submitted back in the beginning and
Yeah, I thought they were.
Front building was seven thirty to six with a nine to five on Sunday.
Yeah.
A typical retail hour. Small business retail.
Right.
What were the, what were the rear, rear hours?
Um, the office hours were nine thirty to six, closed on Sunday, and the access hours, it does say six AM to ten PM.
Oh, okay, my bad.
Okay, so are they still comfortable with those hours? Could we put those hours in the decision?
We'll get an answer.
Maggie's on the line. If Maggie, you still comfortable with those hours?
Yes, that works for us.
There you go.
Alright, um last, just because we got the, and I don't mean to keep driving you crazy, pulling these plans up Mr. Baptiste, but do you have the, the last, just before the last meeting, we got the updated landscape plan. Could you just pull that up for one second?
Okay. And I did ask that she provide me a revised plan for the condition of approval plan set, so we can add those notes.
Okay.
Give me a moment, um.
So has the plan changed in the last two weeks, the, the one we got before?
No, she's waiting for direction. On how this goes.
Alright, so you see what I mean in the back, how she, how she's showing that? It almost, it almost looks like everything's getting wiped out.
Yep.
And you re-
Just that with a note.
I mean, I, I don't think we, we need replanting if, you know, I think the idea is to, to, to um
In, infill where there is a, an issue
Right.
Or, or there's a large tree that has to be taken down for whatever reason. But that's, that was a, as needed, those, those infills as needed.
I think a good way to put it would be like preservation of existing uh vegetation is priority, but if infill is needed, that that um, you know, native species per the plan be used as infill, something like that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't want them to go through that expense of wiping everything out and replanting when the, the whole intent of this is to kind of keep the natural vegetation, so.
Okay, you're uh talking about the south end of the property here.
I'm talking about the entire twenty foot perimeter.
Behind the storage building.
Well, I mean, we're talking about the entire twenty foot perimeter.
He, his, there's large trees shown, if we don't need them.
Right.
But they don't fit with the existing trees, then.
Right, well, I'm saying the entire, the entire, the entire twenty foot perimeter that you guys show on three sides, right?
Well, this is the twenty foot perimeter, this line right here. So she's, we're actually illustrating vegetation on where we have the basin rating.
Right, but I think the intent is, is to, to, to keep there, correct?
If possible, yes. In, in the, in, yes, outside of the, this is the twenty where we're keeping.
Right.
So any vegetation in here will be regraded because of the basin.
That's in, that's inside the twenty, right? So
Yes.
So I guess, I mean, to simplify it, you know, basically try not to touch the first twenty feet all around in infill, and then after that plant whatever you want, right?
Cool.
Alright. Any other um board questions or concerns? Any other public comment at this point? Mr. O'Brien, I don't see anything, right?
I have no one in the chat and I don't see anyone waving their arms up and down.
Alright, so if the staff is comfortable and you say you are correct, we can have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
Hello, Mr. Geller, Mr. McDonald. Alright, um so motion to close the public hearing, we have a second to have any discussion. I'll take the role, Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
And Miss Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Haley is not with us?
Correct, he's not here.
And Miss Begone is not with us still?
Correct, it's gonna be four board members on this.
And I'm, I'm here, okay. Alright, so, so we've closed the public hearing, um so we need to deliberate on, on this and come up with a decision. Mr. O'Brien has provided us with a draft decision. Um, a couple of things that I just brought up, I think the hours that have been proposed should be incorporated into the decision. Um, we also need a final um engineering review, uh incorporating the proposed changes by Mr. Tansey. And those um be updated on the plans. Um, I think we're gonna get a um updated um landscape plan. Um, the intent is that after that twenty feet, they can plant whatever they want and taking clear as, as shown, but that first twenty foot perimeter, the, the goal is um basically no touch, try to maintain existing vegetation and infill if needed, um and um and the, and the, the A and R, that's already in your, your draft decision, correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, yeah, I have it as a general condition stated as applicant shall complete an A and R plan per the planning board planning board request showing the buildings on separate lots as well as providing information about any cross easements to be recorded.
What about, when do we want that? Prior to endorsement, prior to building permit, prior, well?
Whenever, uh, I would say probably prior to building permit.
Right.
I, I would say more at time of endorsement.
There you go.
Well, the problem, the problem is if you submit it now, right, when I, in, in, the form is not gonna be heard for a couple of weeks, right?
Uh, well, we're kind of, we're obligated in a twenty one day time period to act on a A and R plan. So we have a meeting in September eighteenth and then one meeting in October on the sixteenth, but
Well, I'm saying, to get, to give flexibility, wouldn't we be better off to say just prior to a building permit?
I don't know if, if I, I would say, I would say
On the site work.
I would say if the applicant's willing to do it sooner than I, I, that checks something, checks a box off earlier on.
Alright, alright, prior to endorsement of the plans, okay. Alright. Are there any other items we should discuss from the board?
You talked about the O and M.
Mr. McDonald, are you satisfied the O and M is presented?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess as a condition, we just include that the applicant provide a, an O and M schedule.
Or an update, or an updated O and M schedule to incorporate the new structures or whatever.
And we'll, we'll incorporate, incorporate that as part of our decision.
Okay, um anything else you can say?
No, sir.
Alright. Any comments from staff, Mr. Tansey, Mr. O'Brien, that you'd like us to consider as additional conditions?
I, I think you've got them all covered.
Shane, do you get, get those? Do we have to repeat all those to the motion or just?
Um, no, I can, I can include them. Um I just wanna make sure that I had, so the language that I had, um, oh, well what I, the language that I had about daily cleanup, Pat, was uh condition sixteen, the applicant shall perform, perform daily cleanup of construction debris, including soil uh on Romney Road and Bedford Street at least fifty yards from the entrance of the site driveways caused by site construction. Um, but I guess in that sense, should we just include, eliminate the term Romney Road from there as well as add as part of a condition that all uh, construction vehicles shall be accessing through Bedford Street per the uh construction sheet, construction, uh what's the name of your construction, uh?
Erosion Control Sedimentation Plan?
No, um, you
This construction's very fine.
I, I just wanna make sure it's the name, the correct name.
I, I believe you're correct, Mr.
Oh yeah, the Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why, I mean, common sense, these trucks are gonna go to Route eighteen, but we should just probably put that in there, so.
Sure. So I can touch that up, um, but we do have a condition based on cleanup, uh daily cleanup, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
Alrighty, no issues.
Alright, so do we have a motion to either approve or deny the project?
I will make a motion to approve the project with uh the conditions, uh standard conditions, plus uh will be discussed here, if that works for Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I got a, I got a list, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So do you just wanna run through those additional conditions, Mr. O'Brien?
Sure thing, um so hours of operation, uh Greg Tansey, uh reviewed the drainage um of the project. Um, or the new, latest and greatest updated uh drainage plans, uh updated plans and landscaping plans to be provided to the board uh prior to endorsement, as well as prior to endorsement, A and R plan to be filed as well as receipt of an O and M schedule and plan.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, actually, as well as the um the language on the uh, the reef, the reef, the planting of native, native trees, um, in the case of
Did you capture that in the landscape plan? And then, I, I didn't hear you, but you said incorporating the hours of operation as presented by the applicant, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so do we, and then um, the, the last thing would be all construction trucks enter and access Route eighteen, correct?
Yeah, as per, as per the plans, uh they make it clear on their plans where the construction entrance is, so it's just a matter of making sure that no one accesses. It's clear that the, the curb cut uh on the northern part It's clear that the the curb cut uh on the northern part of Bedford Street is the access point, um.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion by who again? I know it's motion.
Uh, Michael and Stephen.
So a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Geller. Uh, motion with the conditions as discussed, plus the um draft decision letter provided by Mr. O'Brien, correct?
Correct.
Alright, I'll take the role, so.
Oh, I I I I apologize to Dr. Juh, just um something I think we've been lacking since of Mr. uh Jimmy left, uh, have we incorporated any kind of tree clearing um restitution into a uh these kind of plants?
I I would say in response to that, you want to speak through the board or to staff on that one?
I think, I think that they maintained a significant buffer on this project, and they're going to try to maintain um the native trees in that twenty foot buffer. I mean, in addition, if you look at that landscape plan, I mean, that's that's a hell of a landscape plan. I mean, mo- most of Dejounte did a great job, but there's a there's a ton of trees on that site, so.
I I completely agree with you. I I don't think Mr. Silva needs to do any restitution here, uh I was just speaking with Geno.
I wouldn't say he calls it restitution.
Of course.
Uh, uh, new rules and regs say that that we can have that that you know, we could ask for mitigation, but I would, I would suggest that they I mean, went over and above with that twenty foot buffer and that landscape plan, it's presented is is pretty detailed, so.
I agree, this is, this was probably the wrong time to bring it up, to be honest with you, so.
I think it's one of the better landscape projects that we've had before us, so. Alright, um. So we have a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Geller, is that correct? I'm losing my mind here.
Yes, you're correct.
Alright, and we discussed the additional conditions, so before we have any more discussion, I'm going to take the role, how's that? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Rojas?
Yes.
I'm a yes. The project is approved, four to zero. Good.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Larry.
Thank you.
We're sticking around. How are you?
Yep, you guys are up next, so, alright, let me pull up. Care with me one second, it's to pull up the next packet, so.
I'll say, excuse me, I have to use the uh restroom for about a minute.
Yeah, take two minutes, I'm just, I want to pull up everything till the next meeting, yeah. Usually I print it all off, but I'm trying to be paper friendly tonight. So Shane, just before I open the the public hearing, the latest plan set that I looked at was eight twenty, that's what I should be pulling up, that packet, correct?
Uh, that is correct, we uh got the plans last Wednesday.
Yes.
And I saw, I gotta find, we got a waiver request came in, okay, I got it, alright. So I'm Mr. McDonald's, uh taking a quick break, I'll continue on to item three, public hearings continued. Um, the next public hearing we have this evening is three fifty Cross Street, map one eighteen, lots twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and eighty-nine. This is definitive subdivision, division, um disapproval of a six lot subdivision, but it's four proposed houses with a previously approved preliminary subdivision uh plan through proposed by Mr. Robert Vazza, located within a residential A B district. This is continued from our August twenty-first meeting. So just, is Mr. McDonald back?
Oh, we'll give him a moment.
Uh, yeah, yes, sir.
Alright, so we pulled the updated plans. So I saw we got updated plans and the letter that we requested for the way, the basis of the waiver, correct?
That is correct.
Shane, just, when I, when I pull up the, and this is, I don't know if I'm doing something wrong. And I, we usually print the stuff off before the meeting, when I, when I go in the portal, right?
Yeah.
Then I click on the site, the updated site plan for this project.
Yep.
And this is why I end up looking at the old ones, because I'm, when I pull up that site plan that was submitted in eight twenty-six.
Yep.
I'm just getting the cover page and then the waiver request letter.
Or three fifty, so it's labeled three fifty Cross Street Chestnut.
Yep.
Chestnut Mayor Path, updated plans eight twenty-eight, twenty-four.
Right, eight eight twenty-
Yeah, eight twenty-six, twenty-four, so you click on that. Where am I? Sorry, it's a big file.
At one of eleven. Yes, it's it's.
Just loading slowly?
No, it says one of eleven, then I click the first page and it brings me to the waiver request.
Uh, maybe it's skipping the whole thing, so, oh, are you, you're accessing from the website, so what you need to do is if you do it like that, it skips you through the PDFs, so what you have to do is, is like another arrow that you have to click on, and it-
I got it, I I scroll down instead of clicking.
Correct, you're you're scrolling through e- each PDF rather than the the plan set.
Alright, yeah, what I usually do is print them off, but I said, you know what, I'll just try to, this meeting, I'll try to do it this way, so alright.
Yeah, that's just something through one drive that's a little problematic, but there there's a way to go through the pages from there.
Alright, I got it, I got everything I need in front of me now, like, and this is what I looked at the other day, but then I tried to go back through it, and my alright, I apologize, so um, so I have everything in front of me, and if if we can, we'll turn it over to the applicant now that the um the hearing is open, so uh Silver Engineering, go ahead.
Okay, so um we addressed all of Mr. Tanzi's letter um comments, and um he provided his return response. And I believe most of his issues were satisfactorily addressed, and there's a few that will be forthcoming, for instance, the Loma process um and his conservation issue.
Can you say in what process?
Loma, we're going to ask for a letter of map amendment from FEMA so that we can actually determine or tell FEMA what the elevation should be in the area, because they don't know. They have a zone A, so no elevation assigned. And we've had uh lots of success with uh requesting a Loma from FEMA, and then they assign the elevation, usually what we come up with.
I thought, could you zoom in on that uh FEMA?
Do you want to see the letter, the?
Uh, yeah, it's perfect, exactly.
Okay, perfect, um or the area on the plan where we're going to propose it.
Yeah, can you show the area where where the part of the property is in the uh zone A?
Okay, so well, I only have our current, okay, yes, so what we're looking at is the existing conditions where we've determined that the most appropriate elevation for FEMA in this area, instead of a a no known elevation uh forty-four, elevation forty-four is an appropriate elevation for a floodplain in this area. Uh, so u- using that information, we've designed a site uh around this elevation being the floodplain. And that means that when we flip the pages to the roadway and we're filling in what we now are considering a floodplain, we're filling in here, and so I'm going to compensate for that e- elevation in this area by lowering it enough to compensate for what I'm filling. And again, elevation forty-four, and I'm only going up about six inches or down six inches, it's very subtle in the amount of area that we are filling for for in the floodplain, and then how much we're going to compensate for it. Um, but those things would be submitted to FEMA and um through the conservation process, the review um of of that information. Um, if I go back to the letter. Um, I do have a waiver letter now with some justifications that um were submitted that we can go over. Other comments that we've addressed.
Alright, so just, just before we go through that, I'm I'm going through, I'm I'm going through Mr. Tanzi's report, we just got this too yesterday, so.
He.
So, can you guys explain, can somebody explain to me what was done for test pits at at the site?
For Cross Street, we did all border health.
Were 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 test pits performed in the area of the drainage? Infill years.
For this, this subdivision, all the lots were perked. So we have uh two perks, two test pits on four. We have in the front of Lot Two, adjacent to um the drainage, we also have perk tests and test pits. The back of Lot One, the front of Lot One. Um, and for Lot Three, we have two perks, two test pits. So we've done the area surrounding and they all came out pretty consistent with their groundwater determination and their soil consistency.
And those were witnessed by the health agent?
Those were witnessed by the health agent, those test logs are on the, on we can go and look at it, it's on one of the pages.
So Mr. Tanzi, are you comfortable with the drainages? I know your review comments, uh most of the comments are addressed, but just before we get too far down the road with this project, are you satisfied that those test pits are sufficient, or do you want test pits in areas of the drainage that you witnessed?
Well, there's a lot of witness test pits done throughout the site, and the material seemed fairly consistent to me, um some, you know, some decent material was found. Um, the stormwater regulations, uh they they do require test pits in a, in a, in these um detention basins, but the uh, the stormwater regulations regulate um for lots or more in a subdivision, the subdivision really doesn't trigger that. Uh, but seeing that they had a a lot of um.
Right, but our, but but our regulations say they still need to meet, even though our regulations say they need to meet the the pre and the post and all that stuff, so.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, they they do, they yeah, I I felt confident that you know, you're not going to find anything substantially different if you go out there.
No, no.
And do a test bit, it it's up to the board.
I I just wanted to make sure before we get to the end of this project, that if you wanted those, that we had those done ASAP, and if if you're comfortable, we move on, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I I was comfortable when I was reviewing it, so I, you know, it's up to the board, but I honestly, I don't think we'll find anything of material difference if we went out there. Yeah, given all the, all the test pits that were done, and they they were witnessed by an agent of the town, so.
Hey, so instead of, instead of doing that now, we could always say that, uh you know, a condition would be that during construction of the basin or whatever, that a test pit be witnessed in the area?
Yeah, and we've done that before too, uh you know, a confirmatory test pit be done, you know, at the time of construction.
Well, I did, I'm just trying to be consistent, I know that.
Yeah.
I think, I think going forward, you know, when something comes into the town, so it doesn't get to the end of a project like it did with with Ace Hardware, the applicant should should have to set those up right away as part of their design. Um, just, just uh, I I know we 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 went down a path on North Street, and then we had test pits done. Then we went down a path on Ace Hardware, then we had test pits done. And now we we don't have test pits again in the in the area, and I just want to make sure, I think, I think that's fine on this one, but I think just going forward, being consistent, make sure that all test pits are witnessed by by you early on in the process.
I agree, I agree, I I think that's it's uh, you know, it's safe, it's fair to be consistent, and um.
Yeah, you know. Alright. Uh, this is my question. Um. So, so back to to Ms. Baptiste, do you want to continue with your presentation, I'm sorry?
I was just going through some of the comments that Mr. Tanzi made, and they were mostly the um, the the Loma that I spoke about, the waiver requests and the condition that maybe the HOA maintains the maintenance record, which is quite understandable. Um, the plans didn't change significantly, a lot of housekeeping, so more details were added, another page of detail was added to um facilitate the construction and understanding of things. But fundamentally, the grading didn't change, um nothing significant in the layout change, um it was mostly detailing for construction purposes.
So I know we talked about a tree planting schedule, but then we said we don't want you to cut down a tree to plant a tree, had, did you ever, I don't see it, an updated uh tree planting schedule on this?
Um, I may have neglected the trees along the road. Um, which doesn't mean I don't mean to put them on there, I just, I probably got overwhelmed with changes and forgot to put them. So.
And I think, I think, you know, just, and we discussed, just, just like on Ace Hardware, I don't I mean, you can put them on there, and and we can put a note that, y- you know, if there's a mature, sufficient tree in that area, we we obviously don't want you to cut one down to plant one, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So I think, but I think, I think the tree planting schedule should be, should be um added.
Yeah, I would say that if we're not waving, if we're not asked, being asked a request for a waiver, then it's implied that they're not receiving a waiver from it.
Alright, so, yeah, just if that could be it.
If it can be added as a condition, I'll be glad to add.
Sure, as long as you make sure you meet the 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 proper street trees list that we have in our subdivision rules and regulations.
So can we, can we go to the um August twenty-six, twenty-four letter um regarding the waiver request?
So the two um for widths and grades uh are slope related, in the front of the subdivision meeting the existing cross street, your maximum is two percent, and to get over the culvert that is proposed, I'm I'm proposing a three percent. Um, that allows the culvert to go underneath with enough cover um and still maintain, um uh, let me go to that. So the one hundred feet isn't even in subdivision, it's actually in the layout. So the reason for that waiver would be to allow this culvert to get cover over it um to allow the water to pass under the driveway, the roadway. The other waiver for slope was related to the longitudinal slope along the this long stretch in here, long stretch. It's it's ju- they're just barely half percent, but with the two percent crown, you're still going to get longitudinal, I mean, um, you're still going to get crossful. You're just going to have a more shallow longitudinal slope, which will, you know, a less erosion as it sheds off the roadway. And then the whole to allow the fifth driveway on a four lot subdivision, which we talked about from the beginning.
Alright, so, so Mr. Tanzi, can you go over the right of way widths and grades section VC four? What what does that, is that acceptable to you? Is there any downside to that as far as design goes or anything like that?
No, I I think um I mean, I agree with Rebecca's um explanation. Uh, the minimum uh grade is is one percent, but that's if you have you know, gutter flows. You don't have gutter flows in in this um in in this subdivision, it's it's just a crowned roadway, and the road is crowned at two percent, so all the runoff shutting off the road is is going to experience a two percent grade from the crown. For, um, and that's, that's not a bad thing, that's, that's a good thing, it it's uh the intent of the design. Once it's off the roadway, there's a a small shallow um or uh uh near level um uh shoulder that uh there's some promotion of uh infiltration, and then it goes into the um uh stormwater um the swell that uh serves to attenuate, mitigate, and and uh transport the the stormwater into the, into the basin, and uh further mitigation takes place there, and then uh uh into the resource areas it goes, so. Uh further mitigation takes place there and then uh uh into the resource areas it goes, so. Um as as far as the 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 pitch of the road. Uh I don't see an issue with it. Um it it's gonna. Uh remove stormwater um off the road efficiently. It'll provide the treatment as intended. Uh so from that standpoint, I don't have an issue. Um the the steeper grade, three percent at the intersection. Um our regulations uh uh desire a uh a two percent. Uh most, most towns will allow you a three percent. Going into into an intersection, and it's still a shallow slope. It's a um. It is a private road, it's a low traffic area road. And they're doing it so that they can make the drainage improvements, so. I I don't, from a technical standpoint, I I don't have any issues with it. This is uh. Purely a a waiver request issue and um you know, it it's. Uh a decision that's, you know, clearly in the hands of the board.
But I I mean, in terms of, so for a waiver, we're supposed to demonstrate that it's in the public good, right? So I, but it it seems to me like these. These changes are being made to improve drainage and to protect the the riparian zone of Snows Brook, is that correct?
Uh that's correct.
Okay, and then uh the other waiver request would be um. The road creating for four lots, but. Uh and just to try to justify it and and to do what's in the public good. You know, we talked about that that front lot, I don't have it in front of me, what what's that lot called? It's what um?
Thirty-two A or twenty-three A?
Hold on, let me go back to the plan. I mean, that that could, that that twenty-three A could basically get its frontage off Cross Street anyway. And it just, it I mean, that that driveway is really just hitting the beginning of the road, right? As far as. This, so it's, so I'm comfortable that this is still a four lot subdivision, you know. And and the reason we're allowing for this driveway to come off the very beginning of it is to. Is to further protect the wetland area and the riparian zone, is that is that fair to say, Mr. Tansy and and Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I I believe so.
I I would say to um not to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission, but uh in the existing driveway. If relocated, i- it's kind of in an impractical standpoint, uh you can't go further on the left. And then if you go to the right now, you're interfering with kind of the drainage, so. I I don't have any issue with it. I don't think it 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 causes detriment to the. The public good or public interest of uh the roadway as well as uh the abutters in that area.
Well, I I guess maybe, so just thinking about this though, so they really can't get frontage on Chestnut Mayor Path. I mean, uh is it best to show that as an ea- so so I would imagine that the HOA would be. For the four lots proposed, one, one through four, and they would own the road, they would own the layout. And twenty-three A would just basically have an access easement over that stretch of the private road, is that correct? Is that how that would be set up?
I would say in my mind, Pat, that twenty-three A is a party to the subdivision. Um and that just accessing it from.
But it really doesn't, it really doesn't have to be, right? Because it 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 has adequate frontage on Cross Street. And it's gonna have a cross street address. And it basically just needs a small, why would twenty-three A want to be part of that HOA if it didn't need to be?
Well, be, I I would, I would say because of the benefit of the the twenty-five acre. Hostel that's being held. And for no development in the future, I mean, for the benefit that they may want for passive. Recreation, I wouldn't want to have three fifty excluded from it.
Alright, alright, so I mean, but we what we'd say is that. I mean, I think a condition, Mr. O'Brien, would be because we're creating all that frontage on. On twenty-three A, right? That any further subdivision, a lot twenty-three A would require the. The chestnut paths be brought up to our standards of a of a larger than full out subdivision, correct?
I'll do, I'll do one better for you. I'll, it would require a subdivision modification where we just come back and discuss this again. So I wouldn't even make a condition, I guess in the sense of an A and R plan, but. I don't know, I wouldn't. I'm fine, I'm fine with that language if if any.
I just don't want to open up a can of worms, we all of a sudden get an A and R for twenty-three A. And we don't know how to do, you know, that's, I guess that's my question. I'm I'm fine with it as proposed. And I I like the A, but but twenty-three A. Really can't be further subdivided unless that whole street is upgraded.
It cannot be further subdivided using Chestnut Mayor Path as configured. It would have to be a, like you say, but for anything to be, to change it. Would have to be either you're bringing it up to the standard for a uh a subdivision road that. Would have a full cul-de-sac and have sidewalks, it would have to be upgraded and and that's not the intent.
So those are the, let me see, go back to the waiver letter. And then it says uh to compensate the requested waiver, the twenty-five acres will be restricted as open space. Um controlled by and maintained by the HOA. It's understood that granted, we'd want that to be, and it's a natural state for what passive recreation only, is that that what we want, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh I think we define passive recreation or zoning ordinance, so let me just make sure that.
Uh actually, uh thinking about it. Could could we possibly? Request a uh like a gravel driveways, uh not a driveway, but uh. Some kind of parking space there?
I don't think we, it's private, it's all private.
Li- li- like I said, a request, not a uh. Not a demand, of course, but.
Or is part of the passive recreation?
Yeah, co- yes, exactly, could be requested.
Well, I would say it gets messy at that point, because now we're looking at. Access easements, because no one necessarily has rights to travel onto private property.
Well, it'd be public property, wouldn't it?
No, no, well, none of this would be public. The property that would be hub. Under, I guess, the conservation restriction would still be under the HOA.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have to allow public access.
Right. It's passive recreation for the HOA, essentially.
Oh, okay, yeah, I figured, yeah. Still getting used to this, uh.
It's okay, it's 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 an exclusive. Conservation restriction, I guess.
It's it's exclusive public property.
It's an unusable piece of property.
That's a little odd to me, but uh. Here's what it is.
A lot, a lot of neighbors. Do it, it's just, it's neighborhood land as opposed to public land, so. So. Can we go, can we go back to the? So I, so personally, I I'm okay, I mean, I agree with the waivers we've talked about, and Mr. Tansy's okay with them. You know, the one, the one concern I have is we've had all these neighborhoods like um. Mr. Diaphrates come before us where. We did test pits and and modifications needed to be made, even after, even after perk tests were done or or soil tests were done. On those sites and they showed a very high groundwater table on 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 North Street to tie into sewer anyway. And changes had to be made to to drainage, and then we just did some test pits after the fact on. Ace Hardware and changes need to be made to the drainage. I'm fine, personally, I'm fine with everything on the on the plan. I I just think that. Trying to close this out tonight without having the test pits confirmed in the areas of the drainage. It might not be the best idea. We just just went through this on Ace Hardware, we just went through. Street, I just, both of those required changes after after the the test bit, so. I I think it would be nice and I just, I I'm I'm a little concerned that we don't have any test pits in. The actual areas on either side of the road or. The end of the road where the the drainage is.
We do have test pits on the side of them. Like if you look at um.
And there's where the infiltration is proposed in the swells.
Yeah, if you look at in the front of uh lot one, I believe right there, there is uh.
Lot one and there's some in front of lot two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the only, the only area that you're saying we don't have them directly in is that.
Can you break, I, hold on, what 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 sheet do you want?
Reading and drainage?
Overall layout, hold on. Lot layout. But overall, reading. Overall drainage, it's a sheet.
You're a kind of robot in bed.
What's that?
You're a, not not coming to a level there.
Alright, I'm on sheet a little six of eleven, looks like.
Okay.
So I'm, I see the proposed house, I see the test bit. I'm I'm on lot four.
Okay, so four is on the side. The the big difference with this one and and like eight fifteen is it's all flat, it's all. All the same elevations.
You would probably see the pet, the test bit better on five, Pat.
Yeah, if you go to five, you'll see them a little bit better.
We have no, but we have no witness test bits in that. In that drainage area between lot two and lot three, and we're and we're comfortable with that?
It's very consistent soils, it's very consistent groundwater, it's very consistent elevation.
Ah, well, what I said there, Pat, is uh. You know, either things have to be witnessed or they don't, we shouldn't uh. We sh- we shouldn't uh. Make the uh. Christ, sorry, struck it out, uh we shouldn't uh. Pick and choose when we do them, we should do them, we shouldn't.
Alright, we've come to the point where can we compromise and maybe have a test pit witnessed prior to finalizing a COA plan set? It seems like we've come to the finish line, I hope, and. This doesn't seem like we're gonna bring new information, but we can do it before we send you an endorsed plan set.
So I mean, there there's drainage, so at the end of the hammerhead, right? You have, you have that drainage, you have that drainage basin with the the rip rap. At at that that elevation forty-four, right?
Correct.
And the, there's really no, then you have that wetland area. Pretty close to it and the, you, there's no test bits there, right? Is that intended to infiltrate there at all or no?
Only what is needed to meet volume, so it's not being used solely as an infiltration basin. There is an uh outlet. Um at a lower elevation.
And then, and then, and then. And then between lots two and three, where there's, that's that's proposed infiltration as well, correct?
Only to meet the volume requirements. This one is only gonna hold about a foot before it lets water out, so it's not solely infiltration.
May I ask, Ms. Baptista, uh i- if you could go down down a little bit?
Yes.
Uh, that rip rap uh you have.
Emergency overflow and then there's the head wall, there's a head wall buried in there, you just ha- have a hard time seeing it.
That makes sense. Uh I'm just, I'm just a little worried about how close you have that rip rap uh. Uh unfortunately, I I can't control the computer, but uh. You have it right up to the wall. If it makes sense. I'm quite familiar drip rap, it's a, it doesn't last very long. So I'm slightly concerned about uh. Sorry, ki- uh I'm slightly concerned about how long that uh. Safeguard will last.
The rip rap overflow?
Yes.
I don't, I guess I, you said something and you you prefaced it by saying you didn't see that rip rap would last long, you said?
Correct.
Well, rip rap is stone. So I mean, I don't see where it would not last long.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Silva, I I I work with rip rap quite often, I it it. Barely lasts two years in my experience.
What happens to it?
It degrades.
We talk, okay, are we talking sedimentation control or?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, yes.
The stone rip rap is to allow for it to be a surface that. Doesn't roll away, you know, if there is uh velocity in the in the water that passes over it. That it doesn't scour. I don't see it going away.
It it does, it 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 erodes.
Okay, so.
It's a physical material, it erodes.
Well, how about this, inside of that overflow spillway is actually a concrete. We uh we're, for the lack of a better term. To actually mitigate the overflow, so are you more concerned with the rip rap not staying there or that the e- emergency overflow isn't going to function?
The 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 former um. I I I have no issue with your plan, I think it's uh a fine. Set up, um I was, I was just expressing concern. Because I've seen rip rap uh. Pretty often fail, to be honest with you, but.
Are they small stones and not like large? Heavy rock?
Um typically, what I deal with is uh just sediment, that makes sense uh.
Are you saying that they get, they get compromised? You're saying that they get compromised by silt?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's an installation and construction phase, usually in my experience.
Well, I was about my guys now.
We can't straighten them out for you, though.
Once it, once it's vegetated, I don't usually see silt in the rocks to to compromise it, but during the construction phase, oh boy.
So just, just so I'm clear on on the on the on the drainage. Because I am saying to see all the big stones, but then on the. Other detail, so on on the detailed sheet, which is the, which is sheet ten. So that's, uh that's how the road's gonna be constructed. On either side of the road, those those swales are gonna have the. The grass line swell with the um. You know, the 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 drains connecting to underground piping and stone, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that, a- anything that doesn't get infiltrated gets brought down to the back of the subdivision into those two areas that. Will will serve as infiltration, but will also just kind of control volume and and only get a foot deep, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
And this will be cleaned every six months?
Yes.
And and there there has been no test bits done. In the areas of this infiltration or those those beds, is that correct?
In which infiltration you're talking?
These grass line swales that are that are designed to infiltrate.
There are ones adjacent to the roadway.
Yes, there is SCA one and one B, one A and one B and two A. I would even say two B or not.
Seven A there, I think is, or not, what's that one there, nine, seven?
We don't go that high. We got ones and two. Adjacent to the swell.
Okay. And then, alright, and then and then if I look on sheet, just just, and this is. Another waiver question, right? Just to try to make sure we justify the waiver. If I look at sheet eleven. When you look at Cross Street, right? That driveway is basically coming off the town layout anyway, right? So it's, so it's really not even. It's it's still.
But it passes through, it passes through the layout of the new road.
The existing driveway passes through, the new connection is.
That but 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 it comes off the new road, but that new road, that section that it comes off of is still in the town layout, correct?
Correct.
So it so it is really getting its frontage and its access off of Cross Street, correct?
Sure, yes.
I mean, the driveway, the driveway hits the town layout, it doesn't.
I would say that we're not gonna change the number of the the road. I think it'll continue to be three fifteen.
I'm just, I I'm just trying to say, I mean, it just it just further justifies. The waiver, whether a waiver of that is even, you know what I mean? It's just.
Yeah, it's 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 sort of an insignificant kind of waiver that we're asking for there, but.
I I just want to make sure we just, so when we get the next five lot subdivision that comes in, we can say, wait a minute, this was. A four lot subdivision and they actually got, they actually got access off of Cross Street. And it and the driveway is in the is in the town layout. That's why I'm wondering why that that was to my question earlier, why would this lot even be part of the full on HOA?
Because of the parcel A in the back. So that he can maintain passive recreation to the back lot.
Basically, all basically only to be. A twenty percent owner of that land outback, correct?
Essentially.
That's correct.
They have equal rights of access to it, yeah.
Okay.
It just provides a buffer to all. I I hate to go back to uh kind of the same thing, but Rebecca, could you bring a page four, I believe, up?
Yeah. For the existing condition. Is that what you had in mind?
So again, uh, well, uh, no, that's not quite the right page, but that's that's my bad, not yours.
How about that one?
The rip rap.
Okay.
Uh, buffer area. Uh, actually, that's that's a great page. Uh, right where your cursor is, essentially. That's right in their backyard. I'm slightly concerned about uh.
In whose backyard?
Will it be uh?
We're in the side yard of lot four and we're in the side. Front yard of lot three and his backyard is not in that direction.
And it's on the layout too.
It would be in the, that would be in the cul-de-sac layout as well, too. They wouldn't have any on that property, it'd be. Within the cul-de-sac, it wouldn't be. Built as a cul-de-sac, but essentially they're placing the stormwater uh.
Yeah, it's it's a hammerhead, so it'll be called.
Yeah, so they don't know and technically, if when this, when the surveyor comes, uh, they'll explain to them that that's not actually their front yard.
Correct.
Okay, uh, the objection uh. Presented, so to speak.
Overworld, no, I'm kidding. You're good.
Alright, any other board questions or comments at this point? Why don't we open it up for uh public comment? It's a public hearing. Do you have anybody from the public? That wishes to speak on this project?
No, I think you scared him all off. It's just, it's just us, um. No, it's just, it's literally just uh town staff and people involved with this. Um, but yeah, I don't, if you have any uh comments or uh questions, please raise your virtual hand. Um, or send me a message in the chat.
Alright, so and then, alright, so just. Uh, I I'll I'll go along with no. No test bits, but I think going forward with all these projects, we need test bits witnessed by Mr. Tanzi in the the areas of drainage.
I'll I'll make uh I'll make a note to remind Sylv Engineering to have us come out uh first test pits. Uh, in the drainage basins as well as that. Um, this is an exception to the 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 four lot subdivision rule. Um, so when Larry comes in with his next five lot subdivision, he'll bring up Chestnut Mayor Path.
I don't know what kind of reputation I have, but.
We will have twenty-four acres to give up, so.
I just, I just think it's, I I just think it's very important to note that we're doing it for two reasons. One. One, they 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 get their access off the layout. They they're getting their access off the cross street layout. Number one. Number two, they have adequate frontage on Cross Street for a form A, so they meet access area in front of, so. The twenty-three A, in my opinion, could be a a form A, so that's.
Well, yes, I mean, I mean, the the way we approached this was very careful precedent, so uh.
It's a river fund in the way.
And that's why we came in with the preliminary to go over that issue. And to get a consensus on it before we went to the definitive. Exactly.
But but Shane, right now, right, if if. That location of that driveway. Doesn't hit anything on privately. That's that's correct, right? That that doesn't hit anything on privately. That section of road constructed there with the island. Is in the cross tree layer. Technically, that's town on property.
But it it crosses the the little corner of Chestnut Mayor Path. It 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 crosses that before it goes back in.
But it crosses it in the layout.
No.
Well, well, that's not what your detail shows.
Right, that little triangle right there. Is in is is in Chestnut Mayor Path.
What little triangle?
I just highlighted it.
The red one. Yeah, it's it's in the red, yeah.
Alright, alright, I get it, that's in the layout, alright.
And even, I would say, Pat, even as part of this, too.
I was looking at the page wrote down the layout in that corner, I'm sorry.
From a subdivision standpoint, lot twenty-three A is part of this. Because, one. The the lots are being reconfigured of lot twenty thirty twenty-three A to be part of. A subdivision.
Alright, I just want, I just want to be very careful how we write the decision that it's, you know, the the reasons for doing it are it's. A very small portion of the road, the reason we're doing it is is to keep. It, you know, from what I understand, Concom actually approved it in a different location, the state overrode it. So we're doing it for the public good, keeping the driveway out of the repairing zone. They have, they have adequate upland to move it, but the but we're trying to keep it out of the repairing zone, that's correct, right?
Yes, yes. And and in compensation for it is that set aside of the of the land, the remaining land.
You know, and I I don't like not doing the drainage. Pits prior to. Final endorsement, but I'd be willing to go along, you know, we can talk about this on deliberations, but I'm. If we want to try to wrap this up tonight, I'd be willing to go along with that. You know, prior to construction of any drainage, test bits have to be witnessed to to confirm. Um. What was presented. Why, you know, why the machines out there?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. If you want to. If you want to add that language as part of it, too, as well as just make sure.
Alright, we need updated plans, so true, alright, so. And any other staff comments? Mr. Tanzi, you're good with everything you say at this point?
Yes.
Um. Mister, um, O'Brien, you're good?
Uh, yeah, I just want to make a note that um being that.
Talk about notes and stuff and and deliberations, but right now, I mean, as far as. If what you're sufficient with us, you're you're okay with us moving forward, correct? You're sufficient.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'm making motion to approve with the standard conditions and the conditions.
We gotta close the public hearing.
Hold on, no, no.
Nah.
You're good, you're giddy today.
Alright, so. Alright, let's take, we have to, we have to address, we have to close the public hearing, we have to address waivers, hold on. Alright, so. If we have no further discussion on this. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So. Second.
Alright, Mr. Geller first, is that right?
Yes, Steve and Mike.
Mister McDonald, second. So we have a motion by Mister Geller. To close the public hearing and a second by Mister McDonald, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion? Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask, okay. So now let's talk about. The waivers. So let me pull that sheet back up. Alright. So. The first wave of request is. Is to. Um. From strict compliance of the Town of Bridgewater subdivision rules and regulations. To the extent applicable to streets with four residential units, a fifth driveway for the existing home at three fifty Cross Street is proposed. To access this road and not Cross Street. To reduce impacts to Snows Brook. To compensate for the requested waiver, remaining land of twenty-five acres. Will be restricted as open space, controlled by maintained by the HOA. And that's a in perpetuity for passive recreation purposes only. Um, it is understood that granting the waiver is in the public good by protecting Snows Brook watershed. And by eliminating future development of the remaining lands. So. Um. The road shown hereon shall remain private in perpetuity and shall never be accepted by Town of Bridgewater as a public way and is maintained. And shall be the responsibility of the lot owners, the homeowners association maintenance agreement. For the roadway and drainage lot one shall be recorded. In the title for each of the four lots, but that's where we disagree, I guess, because now you're saying twenty-three A. Is gonna be incorporated, that's what you'd be five lots, correct? The HOA?
Um, I I guess. I guess technically it's in the five lots.
Correct.
So I was looking at, I was looking at it as that it's already. Controlled by twenty-three A to land now, so it's really the four new lots. That were coming in, that would be part of it, but that's fine.
You'd want to record that in title with with twenty-three A as well, correct? So we could say, we could say shall be recorded in title with each of the lots and lot twenty-three A?
Well, it's gonna be. Held if held in covenant. Altogether, my comment was gonna be, Pat, that if what if the plan is to hold these lots in covenant. Is that we would have to release lot twenty-three A pretty much at the same time, because.
That 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 doesn't, we're talking about the HOA now, right? So. If the, that's why I thought, reading this yesterday, I I thought there'd be an HOA for four lots. And there'd be an access he's been across that corner. Pull out twenty-three, but we're saying that's not the case. You actually want all five lots in the HOA, is that correct?
I I I guess I want to reserve the right to be able to do it for all five. I mean, it could be that it could go to four. But at a minimum, it's the four. But if uh Mr. Vazev wants to. Uh, keep his a lot so that it has equal. Say in that passive area. Then uh I wouldn't want to preclude that.
Well, I think I think in terms of establishing the HOA and and the decision, we need to know. Uh, is it a five lot HOA that the deeds need to be recorded? With the HOA on it or is it four lots?
I would say then then call it a five and then just. Um, if he wants to relinquish his. His interest in it, he can do that on his own.
So why don't we just say keep it to four lots and add and lot and existing and.
And twenty-three A, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'll say that, I'll say a five uh person HOA is probably easier for voting rather than a four lot.
Alright, so we so we have, we have a waiver request to allow that driveway access off off of off of the beginning of the street, so. And the justification again is for Snows Brook. Um, the other thing is it's a small corner, the 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 lot has adequate frontage for a form A on on Cross Street. So in my opinion, we're basically still creating a fallout subdivision, um. But just with basically granting access to this lot twenty-three A off a very small portion of this of this right away. Um, and then I think the public good is is. Protecting Snows Brook watershed, so. Um, and preserving open space. So do we, do we have any further discussion on that additional driveway access? Do we have a motion to grant that waiver?
Sub moved.
I missed McDonald, do you have a second?
Second.
I miss Rojas. Any discussion? So Miss Rojas?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
What I mean. Okay, so we have an additional waiver section VC four right away with some grades, this is to. Um. Allow for a maximum three percent slope. As opposed to a two percent slope, um. To allow for a culvert to pass under the road. At an elevation located outside of the hundred foot inner repairing zone for Snows Brook. And again, um, Mr. Silva, the the basis for this waiver is to. Further protect the the Snows Brook area, is that correct?
That is correct, so there don't have to be any further intrusion by grading into that. Um, repairing zone.
Do we have a um? Any discussion on that, if not a motion?
Some.
Much my Mister Geller, do you have a second?
Second.
And Miss Ross, I have a second.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Silva, could you explain to me? How this protects the zone? By allowing for that uh reduction in uh. By allowing for the greater, it's a greater um slope going over it. It it keeps the activity outside of the um. Out of the outside of the repairing zone, is that why I'm saying that correctly, Rebecca?
The elevations outside the repairing don't let me get lower than the forty-six one-ish that we're aiming at for an invert, and so when I take that elevation back. And establish the pipe under the driveway, that is how I've established the grades over the culvert. So I can't get any closer. To a lower elevation because then I'd be in the inner repairing.
We'd have to, we'd have to move the drainage further into the repairing zone. In order to bring that pipe down. So it's not to need that uh. Greater slope. And uh, please, you should be dumb. I believe the repair in zone is like where frogs and stuff live. It's it's a hundred, it's the, it's the he- heaviest area for protection. Of the river, so it's the first one hundred feet.
It's not technically about frogs, it's technically just about protecting the river fund?
Yeah, it's not about the frogs. Okay.
It's always about the frogs.
When you say, when you say things like that, the fish get very upset.
Or the salmon, or the whatever.
They all get very upset when you say it's the frogs.
They just, well. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, all you.
So just just to confirm, we had a motion by Mister Geller and a second by Mister McDonald, is that correct?
Uh, for, I'm sorry, no, that Stephen, that was Steve and Astrid uh on this waiver.
Was it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, this, because, yeah.
It was, and then from McDonald.
That is correct, yeah.
So just, so the section VC four. The waiver request, it's a motion by Mister Geller, second by Mister Rojas, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take the role, uh, Mister McDonald?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Did I say? Now Mister Geller?
Yes.
Miss Ross?
Yes.
And I guess. Wow. Alright, um. Next one.
Thank you for humor and me uh on that one.
Section VC four right away with some grades. Again, we're looking for a. A two percent as opposed to a one percent, um. And. The. Basis for this one, if you could just summarize that, um, Mrs. Baptiste, that'd be helpful.
Because this is a um. Country drainage, full or less country drainage style. The less than one percent slope reduces the the velocity of the stormwater. As it enters into your um swales on the side of the road. And it minimizes erosion.
But you are, you are proposing at a two percent, right?
No, it is not. It is at less than half percent. So what you see is two percent is the crown. I'm telling you that the crown is still gonna be a two percent crown. The water is still gonna leave the pavement.
At at le- at less than one, so it'll actually reduce velocity, right?
It'll reduce the velocity in your country drainage and. And less erosion. On the stone shoulder.
So the 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 basis for that is to eliminate erosion, correct?
Correct.
But it still should function fine in periods of heavy volume, correct?
Correct. The two percent cross slope will still provide that protection.
Yeah, in that case, Miss Baptiste, why do you need this waiver?
Because we we don't allow typically under.
One.
Full out subdivisions and country drainage are kind of a relatively. New. Your your subdivision regs and one percent is. Classic engineering, classic, just how it was done.
Gotcha, thank you.
Gotcha, thank you.
Alright, so do we have a motion to approve VC four?
Some mode.
Or is McDonald, do we have a second?
Second, second.
Ross? Any discussion? Mr. Gala?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
And I guess. Okay, so that addresses the three waiver requests.
Yes, now we have to decide if we want to approve the subdivision.
Alright, so. Now we have, so, so now we're in deliberation on the, on the subdivision. So let's talk about, about issues, right? So. The first thing is, is that a tree planting plan needs to be, um. Developed in accordance with our tree planting schedule for subdivisions.
Are you looking for a tree planting plan or just tree plants on the plan?
Well, I think, I think we have a tree list and we have. Distances and, and diameters and, and, uh.
But I can just add it to our plan set.
Mr. Driscoll, but it's just, uh. That we should possibly send that to our tree board.
Oh, no.
We have, we have a tree planting requirement. Uh, I, I just want the. Site, the, um, the subdivision plan to meet that requirement and, and the tree board. Did weigh in on our species. And our calipers and all that stuff, so I think as long as they. Lay out the trees on their existing plan and identify the species. And. Have the caliper and stuff meet the requirements of our tree plantings and the, in the treaty, in the, uh. The detail sheet, which I think they already have in there. They have. They have a tree planting schedule already in there, a tree, a tree planting staking detail already in there. So I, I think we just want it to match our rules and regs at all. But, but again, I'll, I'll say, and I don't know if other people agree with me. If there's a beautiful maple tree at the street. Where a tree is proposed, we don't want that cut down to plant one, you know? I think, I think common sense would be that you'd come in and show us that, hey, I left a maple tree here, I planted a maple tree here type of thing, so.
I tend to say, there's nothing beautiful, it's just dead pine.
Just dead pine?
A lot of pine.
Alright, yes, so, so add the tree planting schedule.
Good.
Uh, well, in, in that case, uh, should we just take the, uh, tree board's recommendation as a given and then. Incorporate that into our. Um, I, I used to Brian's.
Can I say something honest?
We, we did, we did.
Um, I would say that, um, we've had discussions with. The tree committee in terms of. Stuff and things. Uh, our subdivision, our subdivision tree list. Has been. Provided to the tree committee and there weren't any issues, so.
Yeah, they, they provided feedback and we removed some things like the pair and stuff like that, so I.
Correct.
I think what we're looking for is, we have a list of tree board reviews. We have, I think every forty, fifty feet of tree of certain calip has to be planted. We just want that showed. On the, on the plan to meet our specs.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to send it to the tree committee. Or review, I, I think they provided feedback in terms of what trees should be considered. From a holistic scale for our subdivision rules and regs, but I don't want them to review subdivisions.
Correct, alright, so. So then, um. The one thing shown on this. That, that we didn't address, um. I- in terms of our decision. So obviously, Mr. O'Brien, the decision will say an HOA has to be established prior to any lot release and recorded with all the lots, we'll, we'll incorporate that language from. From the, um, the zoning, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm treating this like any four lot subdivision and that. The key is that this is being treated as a four lot subdivision in accordance to our subdivision rules and regulations, so. Uh, they would have to comply with the typical language of establishing an HOA and that the road remained private. In perpetuity.
And the intent of this open space is always great. But it always ends up being a nightmare because we don't have it done before lot release. So I think before any lots are released, the. The document needs to be approved and recorded and tied to all the lots for the preservation of that, of that parcel in perpetuity for. Passive recreation purposes.
Uh, I would disagree, I would disagree on that one. Uh, for the sake of, I, if we're placing this under covenant, lot twenty three A would have to be re- leased immediately. Because then someone who's living there. Would, their lot would be held under covenant.
Right, we, we'd release it prior to any lot release, right, so prior, pri- prior to releasing any lots, we'll release, we'll release.
Any new lots, any new, any new house lots.
Right, any new house slots, right.
If that's, that's the approach that the board wants to take, um.
We, we can't, we can't get to the end of a project like we do with every project and then I can't sell a house because they haven't filed the. The, the restrictive covenant yet, we need that.
They can, they can sell the house. With a lot.
Well, I think.
Can't stop that.
I think we need the restrictive covenant early on in the process, that's all.
That's fine, I think in this case, this is, that's.
Prior, prior to any new, any lot release of lot one through four. Obviously, lot twenty three A, we don't want it to affect, so.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want it to be. I'm, I, this is my developer brand, I just don't want to affect any financing. Um. On their end, I guess, if, if they're, if they're approachable to it, then that's fine, but yeah.
Mr. Driscoll, would you mind explaining your position on this, uh? It's a little out, but that's out of my area expertise.
Because, because what happened, because what happens is, is, is. We end up with neighborhoods like. South, South, South Bridge or whatever it is on the, the fallout subdivision that was done by Mr. Uh, I won't say his name, um, but, you know, so. And, and we get to the last lot and we say, alright, we, we, we're gonna. You know, you have to have a, a, a restriction on that land before we release lot one, and then we kick it to lot two, and then lot two gets sold and built upon. And then we say occupancy permit, and then it never gets done, and then it becomes a legal issue where we have lawyers involved with the town. So I just.
It's with, with lot releases. The board has jurisdiction over it, whereas certificate of occupancies. There's nothing that we really can do.
That, that's, that's why I think it needs to be done before lots one through four release, that's all.
Sure, because someone could get a temporary CO and it doesn't matter what we do on it.
So your argument is, uh. If, if we do a lot release, they can essentially have somebody occupy the building.
Well, they can't, they, the, the lots are, the lots would be held under covenant, so they couldn't get a permit in general without a lot release.
Look at the neighborhoods we're, we're dealing with open space right now that, that are a problem, I mean, we have several of them before us because. We haven't properly addressed the open space prior to lot release, we just keep kicking a can down the road. And then the development never does it, and then we have, we have no luck, so I just think that. You know, prior to a lot, lot release of one through four. Uh, reviewed. A reviewed deed restriction in perpetuity. By the, by the applicant, needs to be placed on, on the open space parcel. Um. Protecting it for passive recreational purposes and, and, and protecting it from all future development. And to be controlled and maintained by the, the HOA, that's all.
I, I, I completely agree with you, I'm just, uh, I'll do shoot him. Still starting a whole lot during this entire thing.
I would, I would just say it's, yeah, it's based on process, Mike, eh. We've had situations where in the past we've held things. Based on a CO. And it's really not. A strong argument, whereas I, I guess. What Pat's implying is that the earlier that we can get this in the process. The earlier it'll get done comparative to. People dragging their feet saying, oh, I haven't gotten something back from Wildlands Trust and.
Well, what happens is somebody sells a lot. And, and then it, it doesn't get put on, it just, it needs to be done prior to any lot release.
I, I, that, 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 uh, for sure. Uh, the, the, the stronger we can make our, um. What would you call it?
Decision making.
Exactly, uh, the better, I think.
Alright, and then just to note, that's passive recreation, perpetuity, controlled by the HOA, yeah, you know, in its natural state, all that stuff. Alright, so then, street, streetlights, are there any, are there post lights proposed? There's, there's no streetlights proposed, correct? I don't see any.
There's drive, driveway, driveway lights proposed shown on the plan.
They are shown on the plan?
They're right there.
Okay. Alright, um. Waivers are addressed, tree plant, the, the other thing is, I'd just say that, um, test pits have to be done. Um, in the areas of drainage, you know. Identified by the town engineer, you know, prior to the installation of any drainage structures.
Uh, I'm, well, could I ask, I think what you're concerned about is basin three and basin five. Would it be that the, that the town engineer, um. Witnessed test pit at the time of construction of those basins?
Well, isn't, isn't.
Confirm that it's consistent with the design?
Does almost the infiltration take, take place in the swells?
Yes, the majority.
We do, we.
We also. Test pits along those areas, the only ones we don't have is three and five, really.
We also asked that, um. The applicant notify the town engineer during construction and.
Alright.
Overseeing the drainage systems as well too, so it, I guess during that construction process, we can.
I just think that we should leave it up to the town engineer to, uh, witness test bits at a minimum in the areas of the two. Retention basins. Or detention basins, and then if needed in the, the roadside swales prior to installation. Let's give, give the town engineer some flexibility.
You said basin three and five, Pat?
And if needed, the roadside swells, if they need, if they need to do one in there or something, just, just to confirm.
Drainage areas.
I mean, ti- typically we'd have. We'd have test bits done onsite in the areas of the drainage, so.
Alright.
Alright, and then, um. Is there anything else we should add for, um, conditions?
Doc, I'm just curious, uh, Mr. Silva, um. Is it possible to have, uh, those two test pits that need to be done, uh? Done on the, uh, two sites that, uh, the town engineer needs to see?
Is it possible to do, I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
Sorry, uh, is it, is it possible to have those two test pits? That, uh, need to be done, done on the sites the town engineer needs to see?
Well, that's. If we move, we move forward of the plan tonight, it's gonna have to be a condition of the approval.
Yeah, and I think part of our typical conditions is what I wrote into our decision. Is that. Greg has to wit, Greg's there to witness. The drainage, the construction of the drainage system and roadway systems anyways. So if he's there. He can. Do, they can dig and they'll have equipment there where they could. Just check it out.
I've, I've seen them done, I'm just not familiar with how, uh, like a town process works, that.
Yeah, we're typically, we're there when.
I think, I think we just want to make sure they're done prior to construction, that's all, and then if. If there's soils that are found different than what we proposed, then it'll have to be modified, that's all.
Were we saying prior to construction or during construction?
During construction.
Prior, at the start of construction or at the, well, because you remember now there's clearing, there's a lot of stuff that. At the time of construction of the drainage.
Correct, correct. Alright, um. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Any other board members questions or suggested conditions?
Oh, good.
Alright. I don't think we have to rehash all those, you wrote those down, Mr. O'Brien, correct?
Yeah, and you can review the decision as well, uh, like I said, I provided a draft decision to you guys. Uh, draft decision conditions. Um, but yeah, I included the, uh, restrictive lot release information prior to, uh.
And you'll, and you'll incorporate all the waivers, the, the discussion we had for waiver justification, et cetera, correct?
Absolutely, and for you to review before signing off.
Well, in that case, I'll move to approve. Uh, with the standard conditions that Mr. Brown has sent and. Uh, the other. Uh. Approvals that, uh.
Yeah.
Discuss today, conditions, yes.
So motion. Motion by Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second with addition of, uh, the waiver also.
Great, great, right, the approved waivers.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion. To approve of that standard conditions, the condi- conditions discussed and the approval of the three waivers. Any discussion? Mr. Gala?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And I guess. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um. Alright, next, on item four, we have other business, planning board meeting minutes, August seventh. Do we have motion to approve those?
Some moves.
Bye, Mr. Gala, second by Mr. McDonald, I'll take the role, Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Gala?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Let me guess. Nine hundred Elm Street, um. Shane, is there any update on this from the town or is it far as enforcement? I mean, you sent us that plan. At the last meeting, it looks like that entire area that was paved was just shown to be. Uh, reprocessed gravel, I don't know what. What we can do about that, I don't know if Mr. Tansy's been out there, I don't know. Where we are with that.
Eh, it's just a massive big violation, I would say that my goal with sending the plans over was to show you guys the. How far, uh, it's kind of gone, uh, but. Yeah, we're, we're trying to follow up with DEP. Uh, on that site as well as some other sites, um, but if you would like.
Entire right side was shown blocking, but it was, it was supposed to be gravel and there was no. Reprocess gravel, it's stated, there's, there's no structures for drainage or anything that were proposed in that area.
Can we issue some kind of?
Say that again?
Can we issue some kind of a pine or something?
We can, we can ask, well, we can. There is, there is a process for finding, it's not through us. Um, but I would say that. Conservation Commission has a methodology for finding. Uh. I believe, uh. Building has an enforcement for finding. Um, as we really have the ability to kind of provide a, a. A threat of. Kind of rescinding their approval because they've gone too far. Um, but I'm happy to, I'm. I'd be happy to, uh, send a, uh, follow up too, because last time I talked to. The owner of the property, um, they said that they would be working on something to provide to the planning board.
Well, why don't we also? I mean, if, if we can. Get an opinion from Attorney Rawlins as to what we can do and should do.
Sure, I can do that.
Uh, Mr. Brian, if I may ask. If, if we were to rescind the approval, but would that entail, uh, as far as consequences for them?
Uh, they would probably sue us, um, but yeah, they wouldn't be able to operate their business. As well as any tenants would not be able to operate there.
Now, when you say they wouldn't be able to operate their business, is it? Is that to say we would send law enforcement officers to go and stop them or?
No, it would be, it would be, it would be a cease and desist, it wouldn't be.
So it would just be a letter.
It would be essentially a letter saying you can't operate here, yeah.
So we effectively have no one to actually.
We, we do, but it. It, it's, it's, uh, the semantics of. Government. But we, I, to say that we don't have any ability to. Stop people from breaking rules and violations is, uh. Not true, because we do, it's just a matter of. Hand, we, it's, it's the, we try to handle it like nice people at first.
Right.
Uh, due to kind of. Eh, the, just kind of, it's easier that way, but when we have to be heavy hitters, then. We gotta get our ducks in a row to make sure that when we. When we say something's a ma- a violation, that we. State why it's a violation, um, not just like, oh, we don't. We don't let, we get phone calls about, we don't like something that's going on there, but it doesn't make it a violation. A violation is clear intent stating that this hasn't been followed, this hasn't been followed, permits hadn't been pulled. I'm building in the wetlands, et cetera, et cetera, and it's making sure that. Other departments and other commissions are also in the same boat, so this is. The planning board's jurisdiction in terms of this situation, whereas other boards and commissions are also. Trying to handle it.
I, I, I completely, I, I worked in law enforcement, I completely understand, uh.
So, yeah.
Why don't, why don't we leave it on the agenda? And if between now and the next meeting, Mr. Brian, you can get an opinion from Attorney Rawlins, how we should proceed.
Sure.
I mean, explain to them what's going on and where we have, and with, maybe you can find out with DEP, well, that just keep. But I, it's, you know, we can't just let people do whatever they want, why are we even here if that's?
Well, I, I, I can tell you, uh, DEP's doing enforcement action against them, um.
Alright, good.
But. How effective that will be is, uh.
Well, I would say that. Well, I would say that D P's speed is, I don't know, it, it is.
Very slow.
It's a massive undertaking, but I saw recently D P just kind of find someone for something that occurred in like twenty twenty two. So it it's, it's a multi-year process, but they, they too have to make sure that everything, all their eyes are. Dotted and all their Ts are uh crossed as well.
D P is a very slow sledgehammer.
Sure, it's the state, it's the state, on the local level, we move a lot quicker.
Alright, why don't we, if if we can, um get updates for us, Mr. O'Brien, from other.
Thing.
And find out from Mr. uh Rawlins what our course of action should be and what our authority is, so.
Sure, and if if need be, then we enter into executive session, et cetera, et cetera, but.
So so next, next meeting, we have the fifty five plus on, do we have anything else on?
Uh we may have an A and R, but we're, we don't have a lot of things going on, uh I don't have any new applications for anything, so. Um we have the joint meeting with C E D and um as of now, I don't have any uh. Applications or anything new.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, between that and everything else we discussed, did that cover your plan as we thought?
Uh one thing, uh before we leave, um I do have a follow up with. Something we mentioned at the last meeting, uh four thirty four Elm Street in terms of a violation, so I sent a violation letter over to. The property owner on that site, so I'm meeting with the property owner sometime this week.
What's, is that again?
Four thirty four Elm Street was a violation of a special permit for hours of operations.
Yeah.
Um so.
Is that the restaurant we approved, uh that we used by?
No, 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 it's not a restaurant, uh it's the former uh McDonald Moving Company, um currently owned by uh Berkshire. For Beverly Partners.
Oh, it's like, it's like the warehouse building.
Yeah, it's like a warehouse building that was approved in two thousand three, six, or my time. Um that there was certain hours of operations that the board approved and they're operating outside that, so. One of those things.
Okay.
Uh Shane, if uh if you have the free time, I would like to speak with you a few minutes after the meeting ends.
Uh sure.
Yeah, we'll probably have to cancel the Zoom and you guys.
Uh well, well, there's not three, a private discussion, I just, I just want to talk to Shane about the uh the mullin rule thing.
Yeah.
I I want to talk to uh some counselors about getting that reinstated. I believe.
Alright, yeah. Yeah, I'll, if you wanna, if you want to talk offline at some point, either uh today or whatever, um. We can, we can discuss after the meeting, because I just, it's not on the agenda, so I just don't want to.
Michael, if you want, if you want at the next meeting, we can put it on the agenda. Then we can.
That, that's a great idea, Pat, then we can uh take it from there to directly to the council.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we um, the planning board can send a letter to Counsel Perry, the president, and just say, hey, you know. This was maybe an oversight, we're trying to run efficient meetings, we need this to be reinstated and. See if you can support an order ordinance.
Yes, exactly, I I I believe frankly with the, it uh not in place right now, it. Significantly hampers our uh ability to operate, so.
I got a better idea. We're meeting with the C E D next meeting. Can we, let me see if we can add that to the agenda and talk to the C E D about that?
Uh yeah, if you guys want to place as a board item.
Well, we'll have to, who's the, who's the chair of the C E D now, is it Suzie?
Uh it's, it's Suzie, Brad and Brad, I think Suzie is the, unless something's changed with committee roles.
You know, I'll, I'll, I'll find, I'll find out who the chair of the C E D is and we'll add it to both agendas for discussion.
Yeah.
And there's three councils right there, look, we we can tell that the job is economic development, right, so we can say to them.
It certainly qualifies, yeah.
One thing's to do smoothly, we need this mullin rule, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Alrighty.
Well, uh, I'll, I'll reach out to whoever the chairs on that.
Sure thing.
That's uh, that's even better than what I was thinking of, so, perfect.
Alright. Alright, so do we have motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Geller, any discussion? Um just, just before we adjourn, did we hear from any of the missing members tonight prior to the meeting, Mr.?
Uh yeah, I I heard from one of them, but uh we can, we can adjourn, you know.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I just want to make sure we did, alright.
Alright, so roll, yeah, roll call.
Hold on, we have a motion, motion in a second, I'll take the roll. Um, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
The Geller?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
It's good to see you today.